Thank you. Good afternoon, West Orange. This is to inform the general public that the workshop is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The notice for this workshop was emailed to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger on August 24th, 2023. My name is Council President Tammy Williams. And while we do have this workshop scheduled for 1:00 P. M., I'm going to ask for your indulgence as a couple of my council colleagues are still en route. And I'd like for them to be present as we engage in this robust discussion. So at this time, I'm just going to do a brief, not adjournment, but recess.
Recession.
Thank you. A brief recess until my colleagues are present. Thank you.
You go into the pool after this.
Thank you, and I appreciate your patience as all of my colleagues have now arrived. Councilman Rutherford is getting settled, so we will go ahead and begin. Councilwoman Deborah Michael is with us via Zoom. And we will begin with our roll call. Councilwoman Castellino, present. Councilwoman Deborah Michael. Councilwoman Deborah Michael. Councilwoman, Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa, present. And I am President, Council President Tammy Williams. The matters to be discussed today during this workshop include several items that have been under discussion for several opportunities. We wanted to have this workshop so that we could go through the ordinances and see if it is appropriate for any changes to be made. We'll begin with the drive-through window ordinance. And that was presented for consideration by Councilman Rutherford. Councilman.
Yes, so this is very moderate changes. For those that are looking at the ordinance in the first paragraph after the opening where it's.
I can't hear you guys.
Okay, can you hear me now? Are they, because that was Councilwoman, right?
Yeah.
Is she able to hear? Councilwoman, can you hear us?
Is there anyone else on Zoom? Mr. Fagan?
Okay.
Okay.
Woman Gobber Michael, can you hear us?
Okay, let us go ahead and continue. We can't hear her. Did she say she can't hear us or we can't?
Well, neither now.
Exactly.
She's having computer problems. She did advise me of that.
She had her computer restarted.
Right.
I think it's, should be fine now.
She at work or home?
She is. All right. All right, so in the opening paragraph, it says, and Mr. Fagan, if possible, please.
She can call in, why don't you just call into the meeting or from the public? Go, go into your republic.
Yeah. According to Zoom, we are unmuted. We should be able, the public should be able to hear us.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have. I heard you fine. I was just on Zoom and I heard.
I hear you now.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, it says a drive-up window shall be permitted as an accessory use for banks. And, and this is where the changes would begin. I'm asking that we strike restaurants, fast food restaurants from that list. It continues and then says pharmacies and then strike and similar retail uses in the zoning districts in which such uses are permitted and shall meet the following, shall meet the following conditions. Can you scroll down? Is it possible, sir?
Yes.
Because I don't, I don't know if you have a redline copy or not, do you?
I do.
Okay, there we go. Yeah. For banks, so in other words, it would now read if these changes are successfully voted on and approved. It would read a drive-up window shall be permitted as an accessory use for banks, pharmacies, for banks and pharmacies in the zoning districts in which such uses are permitted and then shall meet the following conditions. That is the, that is what I'm seeking to strike from this so that fast food restaurants, restaurants cannot use drive-throughs.
Is Mr. Greigle on the call?
Yes, Council President, he is.
Mr. Greigle, these are changes that have been recommended by Councilman Rutherford. Can you speak to the process if there's anything more we need to do as a body? Can you also give us a little history on how this came in to be with the master plan? So that all of my colleagues have the same access to information.
Yes, certainly. Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. I'm not sure why I have an option to put a camera on, so I apologize for that. If I can speak, certainly if you hear me. In terms of the history, the zoning ordinance has been in place for some time. There have been a number of master plans and amendments adopted over the years. So the fast food restaurants predates the most recent update to the master plan adopted by the planning board in 2019. That process was undertaken by the planning board, who statutorily by New Jersey law is in charge of providing for these policies with regard to land use. And it considered all land uses, all zoning throughout the municipality at that time, and made recommendations for a number of different topics. One of them for which there was a specific recommendation was to permit drive-through windows as a customarily accessory use for banks, fast food, and pharmacies was the language that was used. And I'll note this is actually interesting as prior to COVID. So since 2020, this has been more of a trend, in fact, to allow for this convenience. And the idea was not to necessarily promote, you know, new fast food restaurants per se, but to allow for something that customarily is nowadays accessory to retail uses to restaurants, including not just the typical fast food restaurant, but other types of restaurants, but other types of stores in other facilities where for patrons who have either mobility issues, children, other, other types of limitations that might make it easier for them to access the facility without having to get out of their vehicle. So that is what the master plan recommended was to be, again, this is within the past four years now. It's 2019, to become more permissive with regard to these uses. So that's the first part as far as background. In terms of process, as is the case with any zoning amendment, the council would have to, again, introduce this if, as it's written or as amended, refer to the planning board for its review for consistency or inconsistency with the master plan. The board would review its document, you know, get an opinion and then report back to you as the council with regard to its recommendations as to consistency and any other potential recommendations. At that time, then you'd be able to move forward with a second reading, depending on the results of that consistency review. So hopefully that answered your question. I'd be, I'd be glad to go into more detail on any of those topics or provide more information. But that's a high-level overview.
Thank you very much. And also just wanted for clarity to the public so that there is no misunderstanding. And I don't know the intent because I have not had a conversation with Councilman Rutherford. So I just wanted to get his input on this in response. Is this impact going to be for future resident restaurants? Or is there an intent to do anything with existing restaurants?
No, at the end of it, if you had read at the bottom, it says existing drive-through, fast food restaurants shall be permitted to remain. So that would be item J.
But I do note when, when you're the education, I want to.
I'm talking about, so we have existing that can remain, but then we have some that are pending applications. So that's.
This would have, this would affect those that are pending application because they're not existing. If it's planned, if it's hypothetical, if it's thought about, if it's desired or wanted, this would affect that.
Okay.
It would not affect those that are currently operating.
And it's my understanding, because I asked this question, because residents have contacted me as well with concerns about the drive-throughs. And so I did go to our zoning board and ask the question as well as Mr. Greigle and our zoning official. And so what I wanted to clarify is just that assumption that if there is an application that is already pending, that this will not be retroactive toward that application. So this would have to be moving forward, any new application.
Councilman Rutherford is saying the opposite of what you just said.
Right, but there's a law that I received.
Again, I, the problem is, and specifically with regard to what we call West Orange Plaza, where there is a proposal to invest millions of dollars. There is an issue of law as to whether or not, while the pads are shown on that site, two pads specifically, time of decision means that there could be an issue for any, because they haven't built, pulled a building permit, there could be an issue with regard to that entire application, which is almost done. So that has been in the interval part. Again, Mr. Greigle was part of discussions that go back before COVID. When, when the last administration was doing everything possible to get that shopping center upgraded, when we knew Kmart had gone bankrupt and that, that whole center was in transition, the goal was to get that upgraded, to get, obviously at that point, we didn't have a Starbucks. We obviously, for many, many years, were the last community in this region to get a Starbucks. We were interested, the last administration in that. And so the target, we'll call it application, has been in the hopper for, for many, literally years. So the short answer is, it is an issue of law that there is differing, and I consulted with the, the land use board, there's a different case law. And so again, at least with regard to the applicant's lawyer, he believes there would be a detrimental impact on that application and the ability for those pads. And again, there is, I would like Mr. Greigle, definitionally, as I think Councilman Rutherford knows, there's a difference in definition of restaurant and fast food. And I think Mr. Greigle, we don't have that section of the code up here, but it may be worthy of Mr. Greigle reading it so that everybody could see it. Because again, the current proposal by Councilman Rutherford is strike both phrases, and they may have different meanings. I think they're designed into the code to have different meanings. So possibly, because it's my understanding that that applicant has made clear the point where they're not going to have fast food on those pads, but they are looking for every, every food establishment now wants a drive-through. People have multiple jobs, they're, they're taking their kids between, you know, athletics and other after-school activities. And as I'm sure everybody on the council has done in the past, you sometimes get dinner on the fly. So people are doing it in their car. And I think the distinction also that, that the council should consider as you move forward on this consideration is, and I think Councilman Rutherford is pretty clear, it's, it's the queuing, it's the traffic issues. And, and we all know the Dunkin' Donuts that's here on Main Street. Because it's such a small footprint, the Dunkin', it's not in West Orange, it's in Orange, obviously. They're queuing on Main Street, which is, you know, obviously a traffic issue in itself. When you take hypothetically Essex Green, where we have new Starbucks, and I haven't heard of any queuing issues, but that's something between now and first, second reading, you could ask the police chief to weigh in on. You, we know when they redesign McDonald's, they put a brand-new McDonald's there, you got to go all the way up and back to come around. Same with Burger King, I think. I'm not a Burger King front person in case there's a subpoena on that. But when you talk about Essex Green or the West Orange Plaza, you know that they, meaning the owner, are going to want to deal with that queuing because you're not going to queue cars out on the Eagle Rock or Prospect. No way it could happen. County roads couldn't happen. Those are footprints that are much bigger than hypothetically. You know, for instance, we have a Dunkin' Donuts that went in here on Main Street. There was no drive-through allowed there because it would have created a significant traffic nightmare. Cars flying down Eagle Rock, trucks. You wouldn't want to have all of a sudden some issue with that area of Main Street. So the one that I know has been discussed in previous council meetings is there's an application pending before the zoning board. Keep in mind, zoning board, totally different analysis than the planning board. It is not a permitted use on what I'm going to call the Golden China site, because that's the restaurant I remember, to put any type of drive-through there. That's going to have to go to the whole zoning board, have the traffic study, have the whole analysis. And it takes a, you know, a heightened level to approve it. Where Essex Green and West Orange Plaza, totally different, you know, different, you know, it's different. So, so again, I do think, and again, I'm not going to give a legal opinion because I'm not going to, but certainly what Councilman Rutherford said is his intent is that it would kill any ability to put a restaurant or fast food restaurant at West Orange Plaza or any new or pending application. Whether or not they're in under the rope, I, I don't think it's clear. And certainly I respect Councilman Rutherford's, what he's, you know, indicated on the record. So it is an issue certainly that will, again, cause the target application to be, have to be revisited.
Just, just for clarity, I don't, I don't think the intent is to kill restaurants from coming to West Orange. It's to stop the drive-throughs. And there are significant environmental issues related with drive-throughs. And this is not something new. This is something that has been evaluated across communities within the United States, not just New Jersey, not just the Northeast, but literally from coast to coast. And many municipalities are taking the position that those environmental issues alone are enough to alter or stop their drive-through, the, the rules around drive-throughs in their community. In addition to that, for us, and I, and I see both Essex Green and West Orange Plaza as slightly different than the rest of the community. The challenge for us is we have, there's, West Orange, we've yet to create our own narrative about who we are. We have a hodgepodge of development. We have an assortment of various types of businesses in town. And as a result of that, we are much more of a pass-through community than a destination. And I think at some point, we are going to have to take a, an intentional approach to development in town. And this is a minor effort at that so that we can begin to express our character as a community and stop being such a pass-through. You know, I, I've used drive-throughs, I've used the one in Donald's and Burger King. I, I don't eat either one, but you know, my kids do. And I recognize the convenience, but I, but I also recognize that since COVID, many restaurants are doing curbside pickup. And that is as vital for them, especially those that don't have a drive-through, as a drive-through would be or a drive-through is for those that do have them. And we've got, you know, restaurants right here in West Orange that don't have drive-throughs, but have the ability because of curbside pickup to service people on the go. So there are other alternatives there. What we do with West Orange Plaza, I, the second thing is, when we look at the municipalities that we are most similarly, most compared with, South Orange, Maplewood, Montclair. Those are, and you know, West Orange, South Orange, Maplewood, Montclair are very diverse communities that are in the heart of Essex County and kind of separate East and West Essex. When you look at those communities, they've taken a very intentional approach to how they attract restaurants. And they have been far more successful at that than we have. And they have severely limited drive-throughs in each of those communities. There are very few that you can, can go to. And what that has, the opportunity, what that has created is an opportunity for more local entrepreneurial restaurants in town that encourage people to walk their downtown, encourage people to stop and spend some time and money in their communities for the food and perhaps for other things as well. And whenever we take a drive-through, we see the success that they're having. So this is an attempt, not just on the environmental issues, which are significant in and of themselves, but with regard to the character of our town and trying to have a much more intentional approach to development in town so that we get some of the assets and amenities that are fitting for a town like West Orange, which is diverse by every single measurement you can have.
I just would suggest recognizing that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And this is just step one. So step two would be to put it on the agenda. If, if there's three votes apparently for the next meeting, and we'll continue to provide the information, you'll continue to hear from your constituents, and nobody has to make a final decision on anything today. Could we have, ask Mr. Greigle, if he has the code book in front of him or somebody else could pull it up, to just explain what the definition of restaurant versus fast food? Because maybe the council wants to consider, you know, that there's a difference between fast food and restaurant. At least there, I think Mr. Greigle in the code designed it so as different. Because again, and again, I'd love to, as follow-up, because I'm taking some notes, if, when you, Councilman, when you talk about environmental issues, are you just talking about emissions? And, and that people, too many people in their cars and we're trying to get them out of their cars to walk around? Because I just don't know, environmental issues kind of a topic, and I want to, I want to ask Chief Abbott and anybody else to help us get you data as you move forward as your consideration. So you don't have to do it right now, but just if you could encapsulate that a little more succinctly. Because obviously, West Orange, the terrain of West Orange, the topography of West Orange, the layout of our twelve and a half miles, and Mr. Gross can testify, is laid out different than South Orange. It has a train in the middle of town and has a downtown. We all know Maplewood has Springfield Avenue, and then it has that beautiful, I always call it the most beautiful Christmas downtown. And Montclair, we know, has Bluefield Avenue, and it has some other areas downtown. So each of the, the three towns you mentioned are awesome towns that, I grew up in South Orange, so I, I obviously partially, unfortunately, brought us Mr. Gross, so I, I take knocks against it on that fact. But they're all great communities that are thriving, we're thriving, and we all have different challenges. So at some point, if you'll just give us that.
So the quick answer to the environmental issues is, you know, it is certainly the emissions that are a part of the cars while they're in the queue. But it is also the noise, certainly at night. There's an impact on, on neighboring communities when you have a ton of cars sitting in a queue, some of whom are going to play loud music. It's also the trash that comes. And then there's, you know, if, you know, it depends on the hours of operation. But a lot of stores that have, fast food restaurants in particular, that have drive-throughs will close the interior of the restaurant and only do drive-through late at night, which then attracts a late-night crowd and, you know, whatever challenges that may come from that crowd. So those are the environmental considerations. And they've been, they've been studied. I mean, the data's out there.
One interesting part I found fascinating that I think you'll appreciate, I started the owner, obviously we have a new Five Guys at Essex Green that's doing well. And Mayor Parisi worked diligently to make sure they get open and whatnot. And he was saying now that these restaurants, and we probably know it from our own kids and our own experience, thirty percent of all their revenues for the restaurants, United, Tripoli, Five Guys are now DoorDash. So it's crazy, people, so when you talk about environmental, you also have to weigh that out, that less of our younger folks are used to doing what we are to go there. And they're, and so the cars are there anyway, is the bottom line. So as much as we would like to think that there was a way, and maybe one day the drones will deliver all the food, I'm not sure we're going to eliminate it. And the problem, and I just, and this is a fact that I'm sure you'll appreciate, and those of us who, you know, have been doing this, it took us twenty-plus years to get a Starbucks. And we worked so aggressively. Mayor Parisi, before he was the mayor, we worked on, and Mayor McCartney, we worked on Perkins Pancakes as for years, because we thought that was the, a, a good family-style restaurant for, where now there's, on Northfield, where Dunkin' Donuts and I guess the rehab center is. But they wouldn't, they have a formula. And we know that most, unfortunately, mom-and-pop restaurants, we have some awesome ones here, but the ones who invest the big bucks, like Target's going to spend millions of dollars if they come in up there. And that's going to hopefully bring up that whole center. They have a model, and they're on discretion there. Starbucks, despite all of our begging and everything else we did for years, they were in Starbucks, they were in Livingston, they were in all these areas. You know, you know, the two, the Starbucks location in Livingston, that, that one in the middle of town, to me, is a horrendous location. But they wouldn't come to West Orange because they said, we only doing it if, if we can have a drive-through. That's it. We're only doing, and again, part of it, when you talk about how we're a pastor, well, we can't change the back, they built two eighty-two town. So we're not going to close to eighty. So we're always going to be seen, because as you said, we are a gateway from east to west in the county, which we think is obviously a plus. And, and again, let's not forget, the Panera that exists in Essex Green is in the top two or three highest grossing Paneras in New Jersey. We were the first in New Jersey, because I, I remember Jim Dawn and those folks that we worked diligently with Mayor McKeon. And it's still up there with Princeton and a couple others, even though they changed him. So, but we'll be teasing it out, but could, Mr. Greigle, do you have the definition of restaurants and fast food restaurants that you could read to us, just so we can understand what you, we're the scripter of, and how there is a distinction between, about, or what we're used to Wendy's, Burger King, McDonald's, and what we call Panera and, and some of the others?
Yes, certainly. I can, I'm looking at the code, it's online, it's the land use regulations ordinance for the township. I'll read restaurant first, I have that pulled up. Quote, "shall mean a public establishment which serves food and drink primarily or exclusively for consumption on the premises and is not a, quote, 'fast food restaurant,' end quote, as defined in this chapter. For purposes of this chapter, a, quote, 'bar,' end quote, shall also be deemed a restaurant only if food is prepared, served, and consumed on the premises." So it's a broader definition, but excludes fast food. So I'm scrolling now just to the fast food definition to provide that as well. And again, for anyone that's looking online, it's section, chapter twenty-five, I believe, sections four is the definitions. Okay. One fast food. That's, okay, the fast food restaurant definition "shall mean the retail sale of ready-to-eat foods and beverages for on- and/or off-premises consumption whenever the foods and beverages are available upon a short waiting time and orders are placed by the customer at a counter and primarily served in or on disposable wrappers, containers, or plates, and where there's a seating capacity of more than fifteen individuals. This does not include restaurants which have takeout as accessory to a traditional restaurant."
And one of the things just to pop on, Mr. Greigle, reading the definitions, going to your point about environmental, environmental is not just emissions and, and traffic, but it is also all this disposable paper. One of the things that was meant to, and Mr. Greigle will comment on it, and maybe we can fine-tune it a little, is that, we'll call it the Panera-type restaurant. They have, I won't call it China, because that might be a little stretching the word, but they have place. When you eat at a Starbucks, when you get your coffee at Starbucks and you say you're eating in a house, they can give you a mug. Panera gives you stuff. So that also environmentally starts to take away from all the garbage inside. So I don't know if we can, Mr. Greigle, look to fine-tune that consistent with what I think Councilman Rutherford's part of the aim on environmental is. But I do think that creates an ability to kind of draw the line, if, if you want.
So, so just a couple of thoughts on that. And I, I know you want to jump in, but these are directly related to Mr. Trink and Mr. Greigle. So thank you, Mr. Greigle, for sharing that definition. I think the only restaurants that have drive-throughs that fit the restaurant definition as just read to us are what we would call today fast casual. Panera fits into that category.
And Starbucks.
Starbucks is, is another, you know, so fast casual, you know, one of my favorites was Cozy, although they're not around here too much anymore. So that is, but very few other restaurants that fit that definition. And I'm not aware of any that aren't fast casual that actually have a drive-through.
Some Chipotle do. Chipotle, as you, Chipotle's coming online, so it's the wave of the future.
So, so I, I don't know if it's a wave of the future or not, but I will say that with regard to your commentary about DoorDash, DoorDash definitely is the wave of the future. Uber Eats and all the others, it's definitely the wave of the future. We're not getting rid of that. This does not address DoorDash or Uber Eats or any of them. They are certainly contributing emissions to the environment and. Um, they are certainly contributing uh, emissions to the environment and traffic on the roads. Um, we're not going to, we're not addressing that in this moment. What we're addressing are the emissions and the traffic, the pollution that comes from. People queuing up in the drive-throughs, tossing stuff out the window when they leave, um, using, you know, paper and plastic. At a higher rate than uh, dine-in or take-out uh, restaurants. Uh, so this does not affect the DoorDash model at all, which I expect to continue to thrive. And the fact that Five Guys is doing so well shows that it can be done and and not just Five Guys, but Primo Hoagie's next to it. And then the uh, burritos place that is just opened up or may open soon. I haven't been there yet. Hope to get there soon. Um, that, those three, a- and actually the Cold Stone, since it's been uh, under new management. They're all doing very well. None of them have uh, drive-throughs. Uh, one other comment you made and then and and then I'm done and I just wanted to get these out so that they're directly um, in response to Mr. Trink and Mr. Greigle. Um, obviously, we're not closing two eighty, um, but that doesn't mean we'll always be a pass-through town. I think we have missed a tremendous opportunity to have people come and spend a day here, given all of the amenities we currently have and our. Our failure so far to develop in a way that takes advantage of those amenities. Right here on Main Street, we've got a a national park. This is the only national park that I've ever been at that doesn't have um, shops and others. Outdoor seating areas and other stores around it. This is, I I've not been to all of them. I'm sure there may be one or two more. That is a tremendous opportunity and we've just left that on the shelf. We have a zoo that gets a million visitors a year. And when those people leave, very few of them stay in West Orange. They go to South Orange, Livingston, uh, Millburn and spend their, or Montclair and spend their money. There. Um, you know, we've got other amenities too, too many to go through, but the point I'm making is we have the right stuff already. To make West Orange a destination type town. Um, and I think we've gotta be intentional about leveraging those assets. Um, uh, as we develop so that we do better for them and for the new restaurants and shops that will spr- uh, sprout up.
Thank you, Councilman. If I can allow Councilman Castellino.
Yeah, no, all great points Councilman made. Um, so here's where I'm at on this, on this issue. So um, when I heard Sonic and Popeyes were were coming to Eagle Rock Avenue. I, I was disgusted, because I just don't think that's a proper, proper location. And um, for, for two drive-throughs, never mind even one drive-through on um. And pretty much at the end of a residential area, even though, and that's been our problem and our challenge in town. Is the B ones and we've, you know, we're gonna talk about the cannabis ordinance, if not today or or after this. Um, that's been the challenge, because you have our business districts sit right. Adjacent to our residential districts. So, you know, and you gotta be careful with spot zoning. And and everything else. To your point about downtown, I wouldn't want any drive-throughs in our downtown area, because we're already challenged enough. Um, but we, a lot of this is also marketing in regards to visitor destination. Uh, we have been successful and and a lot of times with that. I mean, Chit Chat is a perfect example. Of a restaurant that um, reaps the benefits of all our amenities here in town. Uh, many people, because I talk to Gus all the time, he has many patrons that go to the zoo or the museum for the day and come to him to eat. Um, but he's also has great advertising uh, and business plan for himself. Same thing with um. Oh, just got an award too, Highland Pavilion uh, recently. So um, that's part of what we're doing with the Township App and trying to connect all the dots. Uh, Jersey Mikes, I know from my son uh, working for the organization. Uh, we have one of the top Jersey Mikes in the nation, not just the state, but the the nation. And kudos to that business owner of that location. So with these, I mean Burger King, I mean, that's been there forever. We've had challenges in the past. That seems to be running well. Uh, the idling of the car, I've never seen a um, a long compassed line at Starbucks. Uh, maybe when they first opened, but um, to the point, I think maybe Mr. Trank made in regards to the DoorDash. Um, I know when I go to pick up and and had service to the car, you know, you have emissions. You know, everybody sit in their car and nobody turns their car off. Unfortunately, we all sit there and wait for the food come out to us. I wouldn't be opposed to limiting these. I'm not, I'm not really opposed to it in Target parking lot, and I'm gonna tell you why. Um, like it or not, unless we close two eighty, that is a big thoroughfare. Um, and it, and I think it will pull people off of just going through, getting to two eighty. If they stop there to to actually take a look at at that shopping plaza and see what's in there to, and they'll come back another day. Uh, if they order from there, I'm not a big fast, fast food person, uh, uh, the restaurant though. Um, and the last point I'm gonna make here is getting phone calls since from other folks. You know, people are either dead against these, um, or there's a lot of young parents who are for them. Because it helps them obviously getting um, between practices and, and whatnot. So I don't know, maybe this is a Mr. Greigle question, Mr. Trank question. Are we able to let it happen in Target or Essex Green? Uh, and not, are the existing sites? And my other question is if, say if Burger King or the current Dunkin' Donuts that have drive-throughs now. And they sell and somebody buys like, like, are you limiting that permitted use to those existing owners? And not letting them carry it on to the next owner. So say Burger King sells and it comes a different. A- another franchise purchases them.
It's grandfather.
It it would be grandfather and the the use. Okay.
But to go back to your point about, and this is what I like to, you know, uh, get with Mr. Greigle between now and first reading. Um, again, assuming there's uh, interest in the council and and the administration. You could, to go to your example of, we'll call it Western Empire, say it's permitted if you have a footprint of X. Cause keep in mind, how many acres? I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sure Mr. Greigle, that's like, gotta be twenty-five acres. That's like, it's huge. Sites, you know, but it's a lot different than, and again, I I do wanna clarify, because people hear dibbets and think. Sonic and Popeye are not coming to this town. There is an application pending. The zoning board. He's got to go through the process and consider it. So no one should think that's a done deal under any set of facts. And they shouldn't take it. And everyone who has a position on that should go before the zoning board and follow the process. And I am confident the zoning board will do their job, whatever that is, on the record. Uh, and that's really the appropriate way to handle that, because it's not a permitted use in that, where where that site is. Uh, but to go back to your point, I would recommend you consider asking uh, Mr. Greigle and I to look at the footprint. And to look at, keep in mind, what I, what I would say to a couple of professionals. Inevitably, Essex Green, when you have a shopping center like Essex Green, where they spent whatever, hundred million dollars. Or or the Western Empire, they're gonna sell police hits like.
Yeah.
There is nothing worse than if you wanna run to the variety store and you can't get in that mall because they got killing it. It it, the the tennis will kill, it will, it will kill the center. So they are gonna always sell police, just like they pick up the garbage. Just like they hire off duty police when they need them. So, so the beauty of an anchor tenant like Target. Or whatever the experience has been there is, last thing in the world, Target's doing is spending a million to build that store out and agreeing to rent for twenty-five or whatever number of years. And let it not be operated in a first-class manner. So um, I think there is a basis from a rational basis. As governing, as as legislatures to say, hey, we don't want them ramping around town. Like you said, Main Street is too, the the parcel is too small, too close together. It's gonna end up being like Main Street and Orange. Where you can't get down that farther, because that Dunkin' Donuts has to come, or it's dangerous. Where that's different than looking at one of these massive centers, but.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Would you like to have an opportunity for any feedback?
Uh, no.
Okay. Councilwoman Gabby Michael, any feedback?
Uh, yes, um, so uh, thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Um, so something to keep in mind, especially with the location on Pleasant Valley Way, is that those drive-throughs are directly near residential homes. And you know, it's, it becomes a quality of life issue. And I think that this. Drive-through windows ordinance and by making those changes. Um, will be beneficial for our town. So I echo a lot of Councilman Rutherford sentiments and also um, Councilwoman. And Castellino's as well. Um, I do have a question though. If we were to go forward with this and it passed. If you look at D, letter D, it says if multiple stacking lanes are provided for restaurant or fast food restaurant uses, it shall merge into one drive-up window. Would that still remain in effect, that sentence?
If we. Point, we do have.
And fast foods from the ordinance.
That's a very good point, because McDonald's has two.
And so does Burger King.
Oh, I haven't been to Burger King in a while, so I didn't know.
Burger King has two Dunkin' Donuts. They, they Dunkin' Donuts, you go in, it's one line.
I think Dunk- Dunkin' is one, but McDonald's you can order at two and then it merges back. It starts as one, splits into two, merged back to one.
And so does Burger King does that too. Burger King does that too. All right.
What's, I didn't really see the question.
So, so D says that if multiple stacking lanes are provided for restaurant or fast food restaurant uses. They shall merge into one drive-up window lane prior to reaching any window or windows. Facilities with separate lanes served by separate windows or transaction portals shall be exempt from this requirement. Um.
I'm not clear on what the challenge is.
Is that more for, is that more for the banks?
Yeah, it's, I was thinking that Mr. Greigle, the incoming, because.
Yeah, because they have complete lanes.
They have like ATM.
If I may, it's, that that ordinance language has been in there since, I believe the last set of amendments is after the twenty-ten master plan. So this, I don't recall this section, I'm sorry, no, this one's an accessory use. This was added most recently. I'm just checking my notes here. Uh, but it was intended for more of the restaurant type where you have two ordering stations. It's not intended for banks. Banks would have separate lanes. And I would actually note that ironically, banks which were going to three and four drive-throughs, like the old Commerce Banks. They've actually cut back because there's less demand for that. It's a, it's a, retail market is always changing. So um, again, this regulation was intended more for food service type uses to have it go to one window. Uh, but I guess I just put that out there from a planning point of view. It's very difficult to predict where, you know, where things will go with regard to these types of facilities and the demand. And again, the the delivery, which was cited previously, the DoorDash and all that is all things that have, weren't even really as as prevalent when this ordinance was written. So it's, it doesn't make sense to relook at all this, but again, that was the intention at that time was to have, make sure if you have two sets of drive-through lanes, they come down to one window.
I think all of the fast food restaurants or whatever drive-throughs for food actually do comply with this. Because the way it reaches, it says it just has to get into one lane prior to reaching the window.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I don't understand what the challenge is with this.
It splits with two, but it comes back to one before it gets to the window.
To the payment window. Yeah.
Yes, I don't, and you know, if if we're able to pass it, the new ones won't even have to worry about it, because they won't be able to, to be approved. Well, a driver.
So I have, I have, if I can um, have some commentary. So a couple of the things that I have concerns about were, I think we're all in agreement. I certainly am an advocate for us to have some type of holistic. Overview of how we move forward with um, our community. Um, we do need to identify what West Orange is going to become. Um, what we want it to be even now. Um, however, the challenge that I have coming from an economic. Um, background and and keeping that at the forefront and center, um, we do need more businesses here. I am certainly in agreement that we do need to limit um, fast food and drive-through restaurants in our community. Um, some of the information that I've obtained, um, compliments of my son who. Does these things with numbers is in West Orange, we have the top five QSRs that do not all have drive-throughs. So we know that Starbucks is in the top ten. Um, we know that Dunkin' Donuts is in the top ten. We also know that um, Five Guys as well as McDonald's um, is the number one QSR, quick service restaurant. Um, with that and all of them not having a drive-through, I think that's evidence in itself that drive-throughs aren't mandatory. They don't have to happen. Where I'm concerned is that with this target application, with them asking specifically to have two pads. And that we do not do anything to jeopardize and or harm um, that application. So I am, I am in support. Um, for all the reasons that we've mentioned, um, certainly with the zoning requirements and the changes and the variances. Um, I think that pretty much takes care of itself. If it's not zoned for that, I think we have a responsible enough zoning board. Um, that they are attentive to the, the community. Um, and if it's not a permitted use and it has to go before a zoning, I think all of us are are very responsible and have the um. Opportunity to simply say no. But I do want us to very, very strongly take into consideration. Um, any potential harm that we might do to to the target that's coming here, because that is going to anchor um, the the plaza and our community.
I do have a comment. Yeah. Um, I really um, have been thinking about.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, I really have been thinking about Councilwoman Asmaa, uh, Gabber Michael's concern, and I've heard that concern from a lot of the residents. I think, you know, the fact that this backs up to a residential neighborhood is something that I've heard a lot about from the residents. And I think the quality of life of our residents should supersede some of the economic advantages. I think we need to preserve the quality of life.
So when you talk about the other restaurants that she indicated, you're right, Burger King does a but to a residential neighborhood. And I'm quite, I have not heard, and so when we make these decisions, I think um, we need to engage all of our residents. Um, not just a select few. We have an existing situation with a Burger King that is in a residential section. I have not heard of late, and and I'm not suggesting that it hasn't occurred or that it doesn't occur. But I haven't heard complaints of trash being in the Burger King parking lot or around Bonds or any, any of those concerns. The concerns that I have heard in that area come from another restaurant having loud parties, and I think we've all had that as a complaint. Um, but some of the things that we're concerned about, I think we should have adequate information to see, are these concerns actually valid? If if trash is a concern at the Burger King, then yes, let's duly note that. But for us to just pontificate and say, we don't know. We need evidence-based information when we're making these type of decisions, because they're going to impact the long-term future of our community.
Well, we have heard from a number of residents that have come to our town council meeting who have this very concern.
Uh, yeah, quite a few folks have spoken out about the Sonic and the Popeyes. But I don't want us to do this for those two. And I think, you know, just like spot zoning, we've gotta be very careful about writing ordinances to target a particular business. I don't wanna do that. What, what I think we should. I think this is an opportunity for us to start thinking about the future. How are we going to craft the restaurant industry in West Orange? How are we going to attract? A type of restaurant, a type of restaurateur to our town to provide the type of. Business that we want in town from a, a, a use standpoint, being a patron of the business, but also from our side, which, you know, all of these. People at value, not just in property taxes, but um, in creating community, you know. My issue with some of the uh, drive-throughs is, is, you know, I don't, I don't want us to be. Um, I don't want us to be focused on the lower end of the restaurant scale. And I'm not trying to disparage anybody. I, you know, if you eat fast food, God bless you. That's completely up to you, clearly. Millions of, what is it, forty billion people, eighty billion people serve the McDonald's alone. Eat it, right? But we have a challenge in West Orange to, you know, to enhance our commercial property tax. Um, base and restaurants are a part of that. Main Street is is gonna have them. South Valley, perhaps. Um, the malls, I think are are slightly different. I think I I am open to understanding the impact there. Um, but you know, on our main thoroughfares, um, and there, there are a few. Uh, Pleasant Valley Way, Prospect, Main Street, uh, Northfield, Mount Pleasant Avenue in Eagle Rock. On those main thoroughfares, which is where a drive-through would wanna be, they want the the traffic. On those main thoroughfares, I don't think there's a single spot um, where I find it appropriate to have a drive-through. I just, I just don't, not on the thoroughfare. Even with the Whole Foods Plaza, we can discuss that. They are, while they are on the corner of Prospect and Eagle Rock, uh, they do have the ability to have their queue be completely inside of the. Of the mall. And if anybody goes to Chick-fil-A, which I do. Um, there's one up Route Ten, I don't know what town, but it's way up there, and they have this ridiculous line, but it is all within. But it is all within their footprint. And I don't like the admissions coming out of that. I get it. Uh, I'm sure that mall is, is much more successful and, and probably paying much more property taxes to the township because of the success of Chick-fil-A. So, you, you know, we, I just want us to be intentional about how we start shaping the restaurant industry in West Orange and not just taking whatever people want to give us. But helping folks to tell our story. We got a great story. We just need to tell it. We, you know, in this room right now, we have African American, we have Irish, we have Italian, we have folks that have uh, deep roots in history in this town. Mr. Fagan probably knows it better than anybody else. Those stories, some of them are being told. They're not being broadcast widely and people aren't coming and staying and spending their time and their money here. That I think has to be a part of it. If we have a Popeyes and a Sonics and a Burger King and a McDonald's and all of these different fast food places, it's going to be harder to tell those stories that are deeply interesting in West Orange and make us who we are.
I have to agree with Councilman Rutherford. We've had people at the last meeting who said they don't want to just be a fast food venue. They want to see more different types of restaurants here.
Right. And, and that's understood and we're clear. Um, Councilwoman?
So can we put uh, language in here that we could add that will just allow us to have, allow them in the malls?
Isn't that spot zoning?
No, you could, it's not, I wouldn't use the word malls, but you could use, as I said. Okay. Uh, you know, again, you could have a sign. But I think we should ask Mr. Greigle to help work on that methodically. Uh, so that he takes into account the queuing as you talked about and, and, and what's the reality.
So can, can I ask that if, if I may?
Yeah, well, I just, I just, I just not done my thought. And again, like permitted use because they're already there. Not saying that I want Burger King to stay there forever. Um, but, and, and the complaints I got from Burger King, kids in the parking lot smoking pop. Yeah.
Or the traffic.
Yeah. Nah, that's, the, the traffic is because of, we had to uh, leave two spots open uh, for the park and we had to put no, no, no parking there. Um, because so they could see when they come out. But like I said, I, I.
That was, that was.
I watched, I, I, I watched Burger King get built when I was a kid because I lived right across the street there. And um, and you know, just not the right place, but again, it was approved back then. But I'm, I'm okay with the existing ones we have in the other areas of town and only to put any additional in, in the target parking lot or uh, I think, wasn't Panera approved to have theirs in, um, wasn't there an application already? Did the application ever go through for Panera?
Well, no, you're, you're making excellent. There was definitely a pad when, when they got the approval. They'd anticipated that there would, that that would move out. I, I don't know what sex that, I, I don't think it's on boards now. But yeah, so, so, but that would be, uh, but that would be, um, Councilwoman. Again, if we come up with the size.
Yeah.
It's the same. You know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna.
Because North, Northfield has two right now with Dunkin' Donuts and McDonald's.
New zero, it, it really does go back to, to what I think you're, everybody's saying the same thing. Nobody wants a proliferation of this, you know? And West Orange always had the reputation, we had the best white glove restaurant and then lots of fast food. And it's the middle level for families where you want to get your kids healthy food and whatnot. So I do think size in this case matters. And so I think Mr. Greigle, based on his experience at other towns and whatnot, could make, give you some facts.
Yeah.
And I think it would, it would in the end carve out as a result of size, as it's green in Western Plaza.
Yeah. Councilwoman, would that be something?
I'm, I'm open to understanding the impact there and, and um, figuring out what we can do to be intentional about helping them be successful. You know, and, and just for the, for the record, uh, you know, when Target comes in, I am for that. I think everybody in town is for having a Target. I don't think there's a single person.
I have heard otherwise.
Well, I, the overwhelming majority.
Let me talk about pending applications.
You know, uh, but the point I'm making is that will change that plaza, I think for the better, which for us, especially coming off of a very tough budget and having to go through another, we've got capital budget, we've got contracts this year, we've got garbage. So we've got a lot of work to do and a lot of that stuff requires money to fix it. And the better Whole Foods does or the shopping center plot, Target, the more property taxes they will pay. And they don't put kids in school. So there is a balance. I'm happy to, to, to understand that and, and figure out how to move forward in a way that makes sense.
Okay. So I think with that being the case, we are going to refer that back to uh, Mr. Greigle, our planner and come up with.
No, 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 no. I, I think we can do that. We can still have this on.
Yeah.
For first reading, Mr. Greigle can give us
No.
the language. This, there's nothing has been presented to the, nothing has been advertised, nothing has been presented.
No, but you have substantive changes we're talking about.
It's not on today. Today's not a voting session.
Yeah, today we're not voting today anyway.
For September 5th.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
It can't go on for September 5th. That agenda has already been done.
Yeah, no, no, we've had, we've had. Yeah, we've had a dish to the agenda way past Thursday. Um, I want this on for September 5th. All we need to know is the size, the acreage of the two largest properties in town. And we can find a way to incorporate it in here. We can add it on for first.
But why is there such, can I ask you something? Because again, all of these, all of these items that we're trying to take our time and get them done right. So we don't have to keep going back like the nightmare cannabis ordinance that we had, that we keep, like, everybody wants to rush everything. I don't understand the big rush here that we can do this right, get the language, get it on first reading. Then the public has time to read what we have. And then second reading, we could have the proper commentary and then it gets done within a month. I mean, I don't know.
This should have been on at the last meeting.
No, it shouldn't have because we didn't get a time to get our questions answered and vet it. You guys want to keep changing things, which is great. And you're getting, you know, pu- uh, push from the public and I, I get that. But at the same time, you have a job here and the job here is to get them right. And you have to get it right. So we're working together to have everything inputted in. Get the information. Mr. Greigle has to research something, get it back to us and get it on, not the fifth, but get on the next one.
I believe that should have been done at the last, for the last.
Okay. So again, I, I, I am going to ask that we clarify for the record again, uh, uh, again, again. There is a process in how we update, modify, amend ordinances and, and get resolutions on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Kaiser had spoken to this process. We do have new council members. And Councilwoman Scarpa, I do respect the fact that you think there is a sense of urgency. I do not disagree with you there. But what I am trying to help us all be on the same page with is the process that we have to follow. This is not a voting session. This is a workshop. This is discussion. It is my understanding, and please correct me, administration, if I am incorrect. Whenever we have a workshop, we then have to have in an open public meeting, three votes from our council members to put it on the agenda. That hasn't happened. That can happen at the November.
You going to answer that?
Legal will answer that.
Yeah. And I'd like it in writing.
And I also want to remind the council that at the beginning of this year, everyone agreed that if it was not in the packet on Thursday, you were not going to vote on it. It's not in the packet.
So here, here's, here's.
And there hasn't been any exceptions to that that I can recall. I'm sorry?
That was your role that you asked for, Councilwoman. You asked for that role and we did that for you.
But we constantly have things put on.
No, we have not. Absolutely not. Absolutely not. Statement since you requested that, that's the way we've been operating. So that's not fair.
There may be a placeholder in the agenda because the supporting documents have not been disseminated. But there, that is not the same thing because the item has been placed on the agenda.
If I don't have time to do my due diligence.
You do have time because it usually is there by Friday. The packets go out Thursday. I usually get the material by Friday. If it's on the agenda, it's sent by Friday.
All right, here's.
That's the only exception.
And we're doing the work now, so I don't understand why, why, what, what the urgency is because the one application is already in. Us passing this, is it gonna not let it happen? So I, I don't understand. I, I, I don't.
I can, I can clarify for you. So there, there, there are two reasons why. One, the potential applicants or current applicants need clarity. This is certainly being, going to be disruptive to them and their practices and it's going to cost them some money. We don't want to unduly um, burden them. Um, but, but two, we have, we have met more this year and gotten less done than the other two years that I've been on council. I am very much aware of the amount of work we have to do this fall. And I am concerned, and I've expressed this concern publicly and privately. I am concerned that we are not making adequate room to handle the business we know we have to handle this fall. Um, the mayor and her team are going, are supposed to start uh, contract negotiations in two or three weeks. We are going to have to revisit uh, the garbage contract, which is the largest contract that we have. And we have a, and well, I haven't started and I've not, I've not gotten involved. So, um, and we have a, and we have a capital budget that is going to have to be done this fall that I am certain will require negotiation. Those three things are huge and we're now at the beginning of September. So we have, we have eight more meetings to handle those three things by the end of December. That doesn't include any additional changes to cannabis. That doesn't include um, trying to figure out if we're ultimately going to do a consultant for the police department with cannabis or not. It doesn't include all of the other business that we have to do. Those three things are going to tuck, to take up a lot of time. So wasting precious time, which is what I would consider it. We, we would then just be pushing it back two weeks, wasting precious time, dealing with something that I think we have substantial agreement on. I think is, is, is not worth.
I want to make one more point if I can.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Um, the other thing is the advertising requirements. So even if it went on for the fifth, it can't be advertised. Normally when we, when we have an ordinance on, I'll advertise it and it'll appear in the paper two days after it's heard in public. So if I have anything on for the fifth, I've already advertised those three ordinances. And they're going to appear in the Chronicle on the seventh. And then that will enable them to be adopted on the 19th of September.
And Ms. Gross points out, as you know, this has to go to the planning board. So no way.
Yeah.
So we will not go to the planning board till the October meeting, no matter what. So that's.
So, so, and this has to go to the planning board for their review?
Uh, every zone change must. Any, any ordinance on, on zone change. Mr. Greigle, you're on. Please confirm. I'm almost.
That is correct. That's a requirement of the state law.
Especially in this case where it's counter to the master plan. You have to, they have to comment on it and then you have to give reasons on second reading if you whatever decide so that it's embodied in the final.
And it requires a super majority to. Can Mr. Greigle confirm?
I want to research it, do it, but it doesn't matter. The short answer is, it, we're not getting that here anytime soon. I'm not getting it revised today. My, so the bottom line is it has to be done by the, the town attorney's office. It's not going to be back here Tuesday. So Tuesday night's your meeting. And again, the public has been quite clear, as well as some members of this council, that it should be posted on the website and available. So for all those reasons, it's not happening Tuesday night.
So can we summarize what, what we're looking at? So we're in, we don't confuse anyone and we all get on the same page because that's been the major problem. We sit here at the meetings and everybody wants something different. So I just want to summarize. And I, I apologize to Council President because she may be wanting to do this too, but just to wrap my head around it is that Mr. Greigle is going to look at language to permit uh, in larger lots or uh, spaces.
Yeah.
Okay. And then what about, um, and then?
Well, I, I.
And then what would the language be that they wouldn't be permitted unless?
Yes, something to that effect.
Additional ones wouldn't be permitted and unless they were.
Cover is addition.
Additional. Okay. So then I don't think we have an issue. So then Councilman, I don't think we have an issue then, if you're okay with it being in those two other lots.
Yeah, we're gonna get language that you could consider on first, second reading and.
Cause I'm okay with that.
But again, it's not going to happen by Tuesday night, no matter what. I, I just, and what, what.
No, no, I'm hearing it. But how do we expedite it?
It won't. It's going to be on to the 22nd. Karen will pre, knows it, then the planning board will consider that they're meeting in October and it'll come back to you at the end of October.
They'll send the recommendations and you'll see that.
It's not going to change.
So we'll, we'll see the recommendations to incorporate it in.
The beauty of this is by the middle of next week, hopefully this time next week, I'll start you to draft, just like we've done. And then if any of you say you miss them, Rich, I want you to tweak it, then you tell me right away and that way we'll get it as, as, as well as we can. But you're still going to have to vote and go through the process. It's not going to do anything other than we welcome your input early and often.
So you would send us the draft next week based on what we just gave you. And then if we're all good with it, it would be on the 22nd.
Because I've sent three votes to put it on. So we will put it on for the September 22nd.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the, with the changes.
You will decide in a vote when it's before you at that time and on second reading.
I'm in agreement though. I don't believe we should have the drive into Target.
Alright, so.
I don't agree with that.
Okay, and that's fine. And, 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 and certainly this is why we're going through and having this workshop process. And that's why we continue to reiterate that in order for changes to be made, it requires three votes. So if you're not in agreement, then you'll exercise your, your right to vote um, when we get to the voting process. Thank you. Alright.
No, no, I still have one more.
Okay.
So, um, the reason why I'm, I am dissatisfied with putting it off and, and I'm, I'm not uh, comfortable putting it off right now. The first email I sent out with this was sent on August 15th. It is now August 31st.
Yeah.
This is not a secret. This is not something that just got brought up at the last second. This is something that has been um, discussed multiple times in council meetings prior to August 15th. And then I sent the email on August 15th to, to, to address the actual language. Even if you want to discount that email, uh, because some of you could not open it. A follow up was sent, I think, on the 22nd. And that's nine days ago. So the language that we're talking about has been circulated now for at the very least nine days. And the changes that we're looking to make don't seem earth shattering to me, especially given the willingness to um, consider much larger spaces that would not present some of the same challenges. So I don't want to wait until uh, then the 22nd or whatever, our second, the 19th, 19th for our uh, next uh, council meeting to, to vote on this on first reading. I definitely don't want to wait until the October planning board meeting to have them consider it either. Um, um, um. So here's my question. Why can't we settle on, because we've settled on what I've seen. As far as I can tell, there's at least uh, four supporting votes for the two changes that were listed on the screen.
It doesn't matter.
Hold on. Why can't we send that language, the proposed changes to the planning board and have them weigh on at their September meeting?
So if, if I can answer, if I, if I can answer, please, thank you. So it is my understanding that all of our discussions have to happen in an open public meeting.
This is an open public.
I'm sorry. Thank you. And it is also when it was put on the agenda for the last um, meeting that we held. We did not get pending matters and this was placed on the agenda under pending matters. So this is, this workshop is the first time we have had an opportunity to publicly discuss um, this ordinance. And we are also, whether we like it or not, the process is that as we've been told, this is land use law, chapter 25, and it must go before the planning board. We are keeping in line with state regulated rules and requirements. We don't like them. We have to change them in the appropriate manner, but we are following the letter of the law.
I have a question. I have a question, guys. So can the planning board have a workshop or a special meeting next week? Just like we do. We have special meetings all the time. We've had budget meetings every week. We accommodate and we make time for important things. And this is very time sensitive. So it would be great if they too can, you know, schedule a special meeting to see this and hear this so that we can vote on it.
The planning board is a quasi judicial body, governing body, and they set their own agenda. And we cannot mandate for them to have a special meeting. The process is the process and while we're saying this is time sensitive or urgent, um, we don't have any applications pending that this change in ordinance would impact. So the urgency, are we creating the urgency? I don't understand why government has its timetables and we can't allow them to unfold. We haven't done anything outside and we're, we're doing everything the way it should be outlined. So I, I'm, 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 I just don't. Yeah, it's, it's the process is the process.
Well, let's be very clear. There have been many times in this body, people have said, the process is the process and they've been wrong. So let's be very clear.
Okay.
Is it, the question that I asked was a legal question. Is it possible for the planning board to consider the changes that we're considering in their September meeting, even though we've not had a first reading of the ordinance in a, in a council meeting?
Again, the process that always be and, and I don't have a missed land use law, but it's clear to me the process we've always followed. And I don't know of any other process, but keep in mind, until you vote on first reading, it's just like we have up on the board now. There are thoughts and ideas. So again, I can get back to you on that. So you can know going forward if you could basically do the process differently.
Planning board.
Every aspect of Miss Land Use Law is always you at first. Then they between first and second reading, they comment. But I've never seen it done differently. Okay. Now again, you're asking me, is it legal or illegal? If you want an opinion, I will get back to you.
I'd like an opinion.
Okay.
Rather than, this is the way we've always done it.
So.
I'd like a legal opinion.
You can.
All right. The, the second thing I want to say.
And I'm, by the way, I'm going to ask the planning board attorney because she, that's her bread and butter. So she'll tell us.
So I, I want to um, respond to what council president just said a moment ago. Um, I hope you can appreciate why it would look as if you are intentionally delaying these things um, based on this series of facts. Um, one, almost every single thing that I have tried to introduce has been met with some level of resistance and uh, verbalized by you. There have been multiple times where we've tried to move the ball down the field and for various reasons, all enumerated in a council meeting. It's somehow wrong or improper or uh, and then we come and find out later on that that actually wasn't the case. So my concern is that there is something going on that I don't know that is encouraging folks to slow this process down. These seem like relatively small changes. It does not affect any existing business. There is an openness, at least expressed by two council people here, to consider additional spaces where it might have a unintended consequence. I don't understand why we have to slow things down. I, like, let's just get it over with, especially given the calendar that we have. I mean, look, we've spent till three in the morning multiple times trying to get through agendas. If we do better planning upfront, get rid of some of the low hanging fruit, we can avoid some of that. So this to me is low hanging fruit. Public has spoken in two council meetings that I'm aware of about drive-throughs in town. Email was sent on eight fifteen and eight twenty-two. It was added, even though it, whatever, it was added to our last council meeting in new business. We didn't get to it then. That's why we're having this meeting now. Let's not continue to wait and wait and wait to get something done that we have substantial agreement on. And this has substantial agreement.
So can I, can I get clarity, Councilman? Sorry, Council President. Um, can I get clarity? Is a substantial agreement that we're going to add that language? Because I'm not approving this as the way it is. I would only approve it with that language in because I don't want to jeopardize the target application. I'm, I'm going to be clear on that. I, 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 we have, I, I, I hear you on the points. I'm dead set against anything on Eagle Rock Avenue and other places in town. But the target, I don't want to talk about other applications. Uh, we made a commitment with Essex Green with the Panera. Um, so I'm okay again, those two locations. But we keep talking about process. We spend more time and the meeting's been getting late and I appreciate all the public comment, but we don't get out done with public comment to ten thirty at night. Ten thirty at night when we get done with public comment. We have a lot of people coming on the meetings and giving their opinion. And then during the week, I, and I know and I appreciate all the comments of the folks that come on the call. I really do. But there's a host load of other folks that either call or email us after the fact that don't, that don't always agree with the public that come on the call. They hear about it or watch the meetings a few days later. And we get a delayed reaction because they're catching up to the comments or they see something in the tap. I mean, you guys must experience that too, where you get an opposite opinion and they're like, hey, wait, hold on. You're banning dish, you're doing that. What are you guys doing? Like what, why are all these changes? So there, you know, there are other opinions in the town. We're a town of fifty thousand people and we have to find the right balance for all our residents. And that's all this job I keep saying, meeting after meeting is about balance.
I, I.
I'm not done. So with that, this will get done. We're working on it now and we have other legislation that I was hope to get to today, especially the cannabis, so we could put that to bed forever. And um, I, I mean, I, I think we're come to a good consensus here. Now I'm here from Councilwoman. She doesn't want to change it at all. I haven't heard from uh, uh, Councilwoman Barbara Michael where she sits with this.
Perhaps we should.
Well, she didn't weigh in. She could talk at any time. Nope.
Did weigh in. I did weigh in. I said I.
Are, are you okay with the amendments that are proposing, Councilwoman?
I said that I support this drive-through uh, ordinance and the changes made and I echoed uh, Councilman Rutherford's sentiments as well as yours.
Thank you.
Don't want to see Target jeopardize obviously, but we have to also make sure it's legal, that we can put fast food drive-through to setback um, and in a PC zone. So you know, I don't know if it's even legal, if that can even happen. Can we make an exception for one company versus others? Like, is that even allowed? I, I don't know. I'm, I don't know the law. So.
Well, again, so before we, we make uh, a change.
I would love to see this go through and we can always make an amendment for Target, right? Because that, that's not on the planning board right now, but we currently.
Yes, that is it. That is it. That is, if you listen to, that has been a, an application that has been uh, pending and in conversation for the past five years. So and it's now coming to fruition. It's being heard um, often. We've had at least three or four different hearings. So this is something that we are very concerned. I indicated that in the beginning. Um, I do not want to do anything that will harm the target application. And if we don't have the appropriate language, um, then this change absolutely does harm that application. They are requesting two pads with drive-through access.
That's exactly why we have a sense of urgency. If you have votes.
We're spending, you will vote on.
I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. So we do need the right language in there for, for Target, but what they're asking for legal? Is that allowed? Are we allowed to make an exception for one business and not others?
Again, Councilwoman Casamino has suggested, and I do think it is appropriate. And Mr. Greigle will come up with the language ad here that based on, and I think Councilman Rutherford's, you know, willing to consider it based upon the size that that would permit the uh, uses. So I, it's not, we're not going to write in there, one of the figure owner, but it say, if you have X acres, then you, it would be permitted. So it's a size issue, which is related directly to traffic and queuing, which are the, you know, the main issues that everyone's articulated. So again, I don't, again, I think the key here is to get it in writing so that you can consider it and the public can consider it and to get it on for first reading as quickly as possible. As a matter of reality, sitting here on uh, literally Labor Day, it's going to be September nineteenth. So that's the short answer. We'll get it circulated next week. If you got, if you want to change commas or whatnot, great. I will share it with the planning board attorneys so they can start to look at it. But I don't think formally they can give you feedback. And it, and it wouldn't matter. You're not going to be able to collapse it, so to speak. It'll be September nineteenth. Hopefully it'll be the first meeting in October, their meeting in October, which it is. When is the planning board meeting in?
The sixth.
October sixth.
No, the.
First Wednesday. Wednesday.
The first Wednesday of the month.
So that'll be the beginning of October and then you'll have to back on your agenda for second reading.
So my, my question is if we agree on the language right now, with the exception of the actual minimum acreage, right, which Mr. Greigle will give us some guidance on. If we agree on that language right now, why can't we have this on for first reading on, on Tuesday?
It's not going to happen.
Why then?
It has to be.
Has explained why it's not going to happen. Basically, we're not going to get it to her today because we're not and it's not formatted. And the short answer is the ordinance is going to go through the water department and I will generate it and get it back to the clerk and it will view as early next week as possible.
So clerk, if you had, if we agreed on the language today, if, if, because it, there's at least from what I've gathered in this workshop, there's at least three votes for that language, right? If we agreed on that language today in this meeting, could we have this on for first reading on Tuesday? I'm, I'm asking you, do you have enough time for your notice requirements?
In order to have it on for, and then have it adopted on the nineteenth, you can't have it adopted on the nineteenth. That has to go before the planning board.
The planning board, the planning board meets on Wednesday.
Yes. Can I speak to that? Because I've, I've dealt with the, I've been here fourteen years and anytime that, you know, as soon as something is approved on first reading, I send it to the zoning official, Denise Gary Adams, and then she tells me what agenda it will go on. So it's almost an impossibility that it's going to get on in September. I, the cannabis ordinance was delayed for whatever reason. So there's certain things, they make their own agenda. We don't tell them, you know, put this on this agenda in September. She will tell me. So they obviously need time to do their agendas as well, just like we do. So I, I don't see that happening. I can't speak for her, but.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Okay. Gas powered leaf blowers. Um, the gas powered leaf blowers ordinance.
Before we do that, Council President, I'd like to recommend in the sake of time that we go to the tree ordinance, which is likely going to have a lot more work to do if we do gas powered. That'll probably be the last thing we accomplish today.
Well, I thought we were going to do cannabis because there's, there.
It's not even on the agenda.
It's on the agenda because there was, yes, it was. It was one of the, because we had the two hundred feet for the existing, for the existing, um, we, we, we said that the other, uh, the other night.
It's not on the agenda today. Yeah, we really need to get the tree ordinance done.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I don't know. That's.
I mean, we need to do cannabis too, so.
The cannabis, the two hundred feet for the existing uh, businesses. We were, was not, because we, I got, I got the email with the, with the comments. How is it not on this agenda? Because we had.
You already adopted it and immediately after last meeting, I quickly changed it. You told me.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's why I thought it was going to be today. Yeah.
You approved it.
We approved it with the, yeah, but there was one change missing on that.
There were two different amendments made.
I made what I thought.
Yeah, the two hundred. Yes.
Immediately it's telling me if we have saved.
Yes, the two hundred, there was two different amendments made that night that went into the approved.
Okay.
That's done.
I can go look to see what the other one.
Yeah, and I have a.
Okay.
I can certainly.
No.
So if you saw that we missed, it's a little bit.
Okay.
But the.
I don't, I don't think that. All right, let me look at what she said. There was a few of them going around. Maybe I looked at the wrong one. So. All right, go ahead. Sorry. Okay, so we are going to um, put gas powered blowers um, at the bottom of the agenda. Um, you asked if we could go to the tree ordinance.
Correct.
Let's go to the tree protection and removal ordinance. The proposed changes, I, I did want to um.
Yeah.
Comment, Mr. Kip. So I, I don't, I'm not sure what, there are several tree ordinance recommendations. Um, so we're looking at tree protection and removal proposed changes. We have a recommendation from the environmental commission. We have a tree protection committee ordinance and we have steps for the tree removal application. And the application for tree removal and replacement per may.
Which one we doing first?
And then we also have, I'm just talking about all the forms, um, the West Orange Tree Removal Neighbor Notification Form that was recommended.
So just so we're all looking at the same um, document. And again, I wish the council, the municipal clerk was present. On, based on all the input and information we got, on August twenty fourth, we emailed the draft and, and I'm pretty careful and Mr. Gengaro's been doing an excellent job. In the writing corner, always put a date because it gets, you know, we have multiple versions and you get a headache. So the version we have is August twenty fourth. Um, and it just would be helpful if we're all looking at the same version and then make suggestions or changes off the same version.
So this says eight, one?
Eight sixteen.
Eight sixteen, sixteen.
I can get that Karen, I, I just need to turn that we're not looking at the same document. We're going to wait.
After the ladies. So you want this.
Well, it's not through the.
Okay, that's fine. I'll do that.
Yeah. So does that, I, I guess my question, uh, do the council members have in their, they, you have the August twenty fourth one?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay, um, we're just going to take a quick three minute recess so that we can get the right documents.
And we, we can, we can, we'll hand out.
Okay.
So we'll hand it out while you're taking a break.
Did you guys start? Because it's on mute and I see you guys speaking. I hear you. I don't hear anything. You guys are muted.
We're all.
Very, there you are.
But now can the public hear us as well? Okay. We, we just want to counsel McGovern Michael to hear us. Is that possible?
Counselor McGovern Michael is a panelist. Um, but if I mute our audio.
It moves to even to panels. Okay. Um, Councilman, can, is she unmute? Are we unmute?
Can you call me on your phone then and?
If she could call in.
But we should do it in public. Why are we?
Yeah, what?
Well, we're just waiting for Karen to come back, but.
Okay.
Well, she could just make copies for you. So.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Fagan. Yes, thank you. We're back live. Um, we're returning from recess. Thank you for your patience.
So we are reviewing now um, the ordinance that has been presented to us from the administration and its ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, section twenty-seven point four, twenty-seven point seven and twenty-seven point eight of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange, tree protection and removal. Um, so if we go down to the item that is redlined, um, this is about the permit process.
I, I, this is, we do not know why this is up on board. This is, this is not what.
I'm sorry. That was my fault.
So could you, can we do something so that we're not all looking at different things?
Yeah, we'll just take it down.
I have a question. Why are we looking at the version presented by the administration? I thought the administration, the environmental commission and the tree forester are working with members of the community, specifically members from our green West Orange. And what our green West Orange had emailed, I guess, to the environmental commission and administration is not what we're looking at, which is sent to all. I'm, I'm just confused.
Okay, um, Mr. Trank, if you'll repeat the um, comment that you made when.
Administration started this process, recognizing issues that we've had in a number of areas of town and recognizing the input of the forester. As a result of that, the forester, who we know has substantial experience, recommended that we look at Verona. We took Verona, we then scheduled a specific meeting that uh, Councilwoman Governor Michael and Councilwoman Scarpa were invited to participate in. Councilwoman Governor Michael did participate. Uh, as a result of that, then it went to the environmental commission. Uh, as a result of that, then it went to the environmental commission. You had Mr. Brick here at the last council meeting. They then made additional recommendations, met with Mr. Gengaro, provided that input. Again, everything going to Mayor McCartney for her consideration because she's been involved in these issues for decades. At the, as a result of all those efforts, what the administration is presenting pursuant to the town ordinances drafted by the law department is what you just articulated, council president. So now it is before this this body. And certainly you could say, well, we'd like to add X or Y or Z. And if you have three votes, we'll make those edits and we'll put this on for first reading on September nineteenth also.
So Mr. Trank, wait, wait, I would like to comment to what Mr. Trank just said. I worked with, we, yes, we had a meeting, but I think that was back in April. It was many months ago. And since then, I wondered why we didn't work with our green West Orange members. I went and worked with them, so did other council members. And it was a complete different ordinance, which I emailed to the administration. And I mean, I'm, I don't see any of that incorporated here.
I'm sorry, I, again, the record is quite clear. I'm sorry.
Yes, I don't support what the administration put out. So unless we're going to work with the members of our green West Orange, which was what was communicated to me. Even I think uh, Mr. Brick in a meeting stated that he worked with the administration, met with uh, councilwoman Scarpa, um, our green West Orange and um, I mean, what I'm seeing here, the administration's version has nothing to do, not even remotely close to what members of our green West Orange worked. So before we waste time going back and forth here on this ordinance, I think it's important for the legal department to go back and incorporate parts of whatever we went with our green West Orange and and then come back. Because then we're gonna have to sit here and go through because it's completely different ordinance that I, the purpose of the.
I have to second what Congress, what.
Congress?
What, what, what Gabor Michael is.
So I I I want to just reiterate, if I can, the process again.
Yes.
That Mr. Trank, I I don't know. And he can say it in his words and and his legal jargon. So again, what he created to us, and I think you might have been on mute when he was discussing this, is that he did do exactly what you requested. The additional input from our green West Orange has not been what the administration is providing us for changes. However, what we can do and what our role is, and as he just indicated, is that if there are additional changes and what the administration has provided to us, we can go through them and add and insert. And as long as there are three votes to make those additions, then it can be added to the ordinance. So again, it is, it is, it is for us to decide what should be in inserted based on what the administration has provided to us in a draft format. Yes, councilwoman.
With all due respect, I'm not an attorney, so we have a version from our green West Orange and we have the administration's version. So what we should have received today was a combination of what, whatever our law department looked at from our green West Orange and incorporated into the administration's version. That's what should happen, not for us to sit here and go line by line and say, okay, we're going to take this from our greens' version and then put it into ours. No, the work is done. The law department has to do their job and then come back to us with the final draft. Not us taking two separate documents trying to incorporate in one. We'll be.
Thank you, councilwoman. Oh, are you finished?
I am finished now.
Thank you, councilwoman. Councilwoman Castellino.
So so being the senior councilperson that's been doing this since two thousand fifteen, again, we could always change the way we we could do it. I'm not opposed to that. But just just for clarity and for my myself, I'll speak for myself right now, is I want to see what the administration gives us. I get it, you're working with town uh, with with township advocates and I appreciate all their hard work and their input. But but we take what the administration feels is what they're willing to present to us and then we add or subtract. That's the, that has been the way we've been doing it. We get clarity on what the administration proposes and then again, we add or subtract. So by us sticking with what the comments were given to them, what they're willing to do, and then we could go from there and add addition. Maybe some of the comments are in here, maybe they're not, but you know, again, yeah, it's it's a little more work, but that's what we're here for, to work.
That's, that's not, I'm not saying we're not here to work. We are, we have been working. My point is it's.
I know.
Responsibility now to take.
No, it's not. No, it's not. The legal department's responsibility is is.
Did you even look at the ordinance that our green West Orange?
Yeah, I did, and I agree with.
I'm asking Mr. Trank about you.
Yes, I I would like to respond.
Hold on, it was in front of you, councilwoman. In the last meeting, when I asked to have it printed out for everyone and put in front of each and every single one of us. So you've had this in front of you. I'm asking the legal department if they have had a chance to look at it and incorporate the changes in their version. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I want to, I want to be specific. On April sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at eight twenty-seven AM, Councilwoman Gabor Michael wrote back to Mr. Gengaro and said, quote, "I have no questions or concerns. Thank you." On June eighth, two thousand twenty-three, after Councilwoman Gabor Michael had provided us with, I assume this organization she's referring to, she was sent a letter saying we've incorporated some of the edits that have been proposed and we have not, and it's a two-page letter and um, uh, various people, we have not incorporated certain of them on the basis of the following reasons. There was never a response provided to that. So it is exactly what Councilwoman Castellino said. It is now for you as the legislative body to make amendments, see if you have three votes for it. And then we will add them. We do not take some other, you could take input from anywhere you want. That's your jo, that's your job. You can now say, I want to change section five, section twelve, I want to add this, I want to, you know, we we have done what the administration's version is. So the whole purpose, I thought of a work session is to discuss the issues where there is still a desire to change it further and decide whether you have a consensus, three votes. That's why we're here, I thought, on a special day, the day before Labor Day weekend. So I I I don't think it matters how, at the end of the day, we, the administration doesn't, and and the the law is clear in this town. And again, three dash seventeen point one is very clear. Every ordinance has to come from the law department, period. So we are presenting you the ordinance. So now it's your turn to make any amendments you want, period. So it's not that anyone's ignored anyone.
Yeah.
Least of all, Councilwoman Gabor Michael, who we've been available to twenty-four seven and who we've given detailed responses. We welcome everyone's input, but the administration has not chosen at the direction of the mayor, who is the head of the administration, to incorporate every single proposal by that organization. Now it's your.
So why don't we just go down each one?
Um, I I looked through what has been presented to us today. The document that the town clerk had on screen a moment ago is not a part of what was presented to us today.
Yes, that was a mistake. Sorry.
Um, so I don't know that it was a mistake. I mean, I mean, maybe it was a mistake. I I don't know. What I, what I do know is that the reason we have the tree protection and removal ordinance before us, not just the, not, it's twenty-five dash twenty-seven dot one, not just twenty-five, twenty-seven dot four, twenty-seven dot seven, and twenty-seven dot eight, is because we wanted some changes to twenty-seven dot one, twenty-seven dot two, twenty-seven dot three as well. I believe it was twenty-seven, right? So there, there is some work to be done, or at least I thought we were going to do some work on this part of the ordinance. Is that not right?
What are you talking about? We, again, Mr. Gengaro can talk about this specific section you're talking about, but we've incorporated all the edits that the administration is presenting. So you're saying we're not making any amendments twenty-seven, one, two, and three?
Well, that's not.
I'm sorry.
Is that part of what you just gave us, Mr. Gengaro?
The ordinance that I was working with the environmental commission and bear today.
Steven, can you talk to the man? Thank you.
This ordinance amends three sections, chapter twenty-five, section twenty-seven, it amends chapter twenty-five, section twenty-seven point four, section twenty-seven point seven, and section twenty-seven point eight. I have not heard from any of the council members regarding any proposed changes to the first three sections of the pre-ord, so the chapter twenty-five, twenty-seven.
We haven't responded because with all due respect, up until recently and per the judge, you're, the firm didn't have a contract to do any work, so we didn't want to correspond and justify any work. So that's why you haven't heard from us in very long.
So then that also speaks to the delay and some of uh, this, I'm sorry. It also.
She did have the microphone, council president.
Yeah, I I didn't finish. I was trying to explain why there's been no communication is because in March, the contracts failed for the Trank firm and for Trank's contract. So that's why we haven't been communicating with anyone from Trank's firm. We have to put something out there and now all of a sudden the judge gave a temporary, a temporary allowed, I don't know what the legal term is, temporary allowed him to do the work until she comes up with the decision and our court case is not until October seventh. This is why now you're there, Mr. Gengaro, and we're all working together. No one's communicated with anyone from your firm or with Mr. Trank. I I mean, I haven't, I can say, I'm not gonna say anyone, let me not generalize. Well, that's why you guys haven't heard back from me. And I, when I, when our green West Orange reached out to me and say, hey, there's a tree ordinance, why aren't they working with us? I think it's important to work with community groups and that's why I went to meet with them, sat with them. And they came up with a very thorough uh, ordinance that they rewrote and worked with Mr. Brick from the environmental commission and our forester. So I don't understand why their changes are not incorporated at all in your ord, in the ordinance the administration presented. So if we're gonna start, we have to start from the very first twenty-five dash twenty-seven point one and then go from there.
I have a question. Was this that we just got put in front of us on the website for the public to view? Or was it some other jet uh, generation?
I'd have to look at to see.
Well, this has to be on for the public to view. And I think that's a reason we should, it's three o'clock, or we should have the time to see it. The public needs to see it. We need to review it.
Yeah, I I don't have a, no objection to that. I agree. I I pointed out earlier that I did not believe that this was on the, on the website. We understand and we're in total agreement. And again, to Councilwoman Gabor Michael's point, the purpose of us not continuing to do the people's business was a choice and a decision that was made. And so now we have a lot of work that we have to continue to do that is before us. I am not in disagreement that we don't need to go back to some of the earlier versions of this tree protection plan and deal with them. I, we're all in agreement. We need to have some changes. The only thing that we are dealing with now that seems to be the subject of of some malcontent or discontent is that this revision that has been presented by the administration has not been something that has been posted for the public to review as well. So I think that that is something that we are concerned about. We want this to be posted. And then we want the opportunity to go back and that is our legislative responsibility. If we do not see incorporated changes from any of our groups, any of our advocacy groups, any of our residents, and we think they should be inserted or updated into the ordinance, that is what we are expected to do.
Thank you, council president.
You're welcome.
So so the only question I have, this version, which I guess was up on the board, when did anybody edit?
You you got it on August fourth. That was sent to you in the initial email from Councilwoman Gabor Michael on August fourth.
I never got that. I explained that.
Uh, you may not have in the initial, Karen, because you're not listed on that. It went to the West Orange Township Council, Mr. Trank, Mr. Gross, and Mayor McCartney. The follow, the response was sent on uh, August seventh from you. So I don't know who forwarded it to you, but someone got you in this chain somehow. Um, and you, your question was, how do we proceed? Um, because all of these changes from the community were recommended, we've got an ordinance. How do we, I thought that was a legitimate question. The response came from the mayor.
I was gonna say the response came from the mayor.
And the West Orange Environmental Commission met. Comments from them, the forester and community members are being incorporated into the tree draft, ordinance draft for review.
Wasn't.
Issue, and then your response was, just give it to me. I mean, you didn't say it that way. You were very professional.
Goodness. Doesn't sound like.
Tell me what you're hard, John.
Maybe if I'm tired at the end of the day, I don't know.
That's, that's me, that's me reading, reading between the lines.
Yeah.
Uh, please provide the ordinance to the clerk's office by three PM, right? So but the the challenge is what some, because I I spent time working on this as well. And, you know, and this time is one thing that we'll never get back, so. We.
Never.
We've spent quite a bit of time working on this and then we get this back. And some of the things that were recommended that uh, were important to me are not even included in what was sent out today. So like, we can't even, we'd have to start over from scratch.
But that's not even, that's not, that's not even the the right, so that's.
Red line, this is the red line.
Right, from the administration, but to to councilwoman's point is we have to go back to the beginning because these are only three changes and those.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying. The change, some of the changes under what uh, uh, municipal clerk put on the board earlier, under the tree protection and removal ordinance, which is a part of our tree ordinance. That entire sec, uh, chapter twenty-five uh, deals with this. Um, that, uh, unless, and I, and I have to go back through this and go line by line to know if these changes have been incorporated elsewhere in the document. And I I don't have the ability to do that. I can't, I certainly can't do that now. So I mean, like, that's the disappointment. What what we were hoping would happen and what Councilwoman Gabor Michael was speaking to a moment ago was when, when she sent in that email on August fourth, she wanted certain things included in the tree ordinance. I was in agreement with that because I was in the working session with her, she and I. We agreed. We submitted those things. Now, if it would have been easier for us if in the response the mayor or the law department would have said, hey, these are the recommendations we've accepted and incorporated. Here's where they're incorporated because it's not in the part that we sent. Uh, and these are the recommendations that we disregarded. That would have been easier for us to analyze. We wouldn't have had this now half an hour talking about the tree ordinance and not even being able to actually work on it.
But I, but I think it's important because we're, we're trying to find a process that works for everybody. Because up until now, and again, we haven't had this problem since this year, you know, things are constantly emails. There's, there, I have to keep Googling my email to make sure I have everything because there's so many of us. That's why everything needs to go just to the clerk and no, not Mr. Trank or anyone else. Just to the clerks, that's what she does for us. She keeps track of that and that direction still isn't always being followed. So I, I think it's important that that gets done, so we we get everything that you're asking for. Second of all, um, again, so my question is, chapter, excuse me, uh, Mr. Trank, Mr. Gengaro, so twenty-five dash twenty-seven point one. Okay, so my question is, are some, to councilman's point, are some of the edits in here transferred over to this section? Or we have to get confirmation of that? Did the mayor look?
So I, so I just wanted to comment on your, your, your ask. It is my discussion with the mayor that she is putting forth the revisions and the administration. This, these revisions are what she is recommending. And again, if there are some other parts of the ordinance that were not dealt with or included, then we have to come back and make those updates or changes.
But not in here, we do it as we speak, so we could go off the list and then put it in.
Regardless of how things have been done in the past, I have a legal question that needs clarification. If we have three votes and a council member puts an ordinance or a resolution together, they have the right to have it, have it spread on first ordinance.
Okay.
I did it with cannabis because nobody else was doing it. I had.
That's not true. That's not true. You made edits.
I, that's right, but I had to work with community members because nothing was getting done.
No, that's not true.
But there is an ordinance in place that says that all legislation is written by the legal department.
Yeah.
Not by resident, not by organizations, not by anyone else, but by the legal department.
So that's why I asked, did Mr. Trank look at the ordinance that our green West Orange?
He answered that question. He said, yes, he did.
Okay, so then why were none of the?
Because the administration did chose not to incorporate them into the revisions. And so again. And so again, as us being the legislative body, we can now that it's been presented to us, we can go through and make any updates as we've done with cannabis or any other ordinance um, that has come before this body. But that is our legislative obligation. And and again, it's not suggesting that even the additional um ordinances or recommendations that are that are here, the tree protection and removal ordinance, the committee ordinance, those can still be incorporated. It's just not in the sections that we have presented to us today.
Okay, well, I would like for us to not use the administration's ordinance. Um, I would like us to use the other ordinance and go from there and then and make the edits and then
Councilwoman, I I know, but again, to to the, to to the legal department and again, the law that Madam Clerk just reiterated. All ordinances have to go through the legal department. They're written by the legal department. So we can't use something that has been written by an outside organization. That's not our legal department.
All right, I I have a, I I think we're getting caught up in semantics. What I understand Councilwoman Gabor Michael to be asking for is that these things that have been worked on with council members as included and and at separate times, we've never met all three of us. Um, these things that have been forwarded in the August fourth email, we want them included in the tree ordinance. I know the mayor doesn't. At least now I know, right? Because her, her response was unclear. Her response did not say which changes she accepted, which changes she rejected. It just said some were accepted from different parts of the community. That's fine. We'll pass that now. What we want, and by we, I mean myself, uh, I I believe Councilwoman Gabor Michael, I'm interpreting her.
Yes.
And uh, as I've spoken to Councilwoman Scarpere just now, what we would like are these six things that have been submitted, included in the tree ordinance that the legal team drafts. And then we can vote on it. And there may be some discussion. And we may say, okay, well, you know what? That's too far, or that doesn't go far enough, or I don't like the way that's said. And we can decide that. But to work from the document that's been presented, that does not incorporate the majority of the changes that were recommended, I think is the wrong approach to solving the issue. And let's be very clear, the reason we are here is our tree canopy is now twenty-seven percent. That comes from the study that Mayor herself commissioned as reported to us in this body by Mike Brick and the Environmental Commission. Our tree canopy is currently at twenty-seven percent and it should be at forty percent. And it has dropped from thirty to twenty-seven, which is a ten percent reduction in three years. So if we continue on the path that we're on, we are not going to have the trees in West Orange, which was once known for all of these trees. I think that's something all five of us care about. I think it's in our best interest to work comprehensively throughout the entire chapter twenty-five. So I would, I would like the the legal team to incorporate all of the changes that were sent in that August fourth email.
So, so you have that August fourth email in front of you?
I do.
You have to open it. And I want you to look at it. And I want you to concede after you do that it wasn't sent. Because look at it, you will see that what was sent was two of the same document, you know, again, Mr. Jengaro. Again, people can attack me, it's perfectly fine. But Mr. Jengaro has worked countless hours on this and been available.
No, no one's attacking anyone. No one's attacking anyone.
Era that occurred on the part of Councilwoman Gabor Mike. You will see that what you are now referring to today are two different documents. One is a, has bullets and is a aside and a couple lines. That is provided to us twice. This longer document that, as you mentioned before, starts at seven, twenty-seven point one and goes through and is eleven, twelve pages was not Councilman uh, uh, attacked. So the minute I got it, I'm I'm like Karen. I immediately put to Mr. Jengaro and said, let's work on this. Let's see if there's anything we can incorporate. Let's make sure we get the feedback. But I didn't have it. So again, it is not the administration's fault of the process. And again, every one of you has my cell phone number. And if anytime you feel that we haven't addressed something, so I go back to what you made. I think it's fair for you to say, hey, I'd like a detailed memo for when we do discuss this as to why and and why we did not incorporate stuff that was recommended by anyone. And then we'll, we'll be prepared. That's fair game. And then you will evaluate saying, well, we don't agree with the ministry, everything you've said. So please, can you look at the email and see if you agree that I properly represented to you that it was not sent to us on August fourth?
So I I I have the email open in front of me. Uh, I see that there are two attachments and there are
And the two attachments are identical.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there are five attachments.
But in terms of the ordinance that you are suggesting we should have just reverted it, it was not attached.
It was very confusing to me.
So I get it. There are five attachments to that, to that email. Whether all of the things referenced, because there were six things referenced. If one of those six was not missing, just as we all have your cell phone, Mr. Trank, you have all of our cell phones as well. Well, let me finish, please, Mr. Trank. You have our cell phone as well. If there was something missing from the attachment, you could have either emailed or called and said, hey, there are five things, you referenced sixth, where's the sixth one, right? Now, if something was sent inappropriately, mistakenly, a document was sent twice, and now you have four instead of the six, you could have referenced that as well and let us know. But at at the end of the day, nobody cares. This is not about assessing blame to him or to anyone else. This is not about who's at fault for where we are. This is about finding the way forward from here. So to be able to deal with this, my recommendation, and I think it's it's sound, and I think it it will be supported, is that we have all, and if we have to send more emails, great, we'll send them to you. We have all of those changes that were worked on incorporated so that we have one document to work off of and vote up or down on the various amendments to it.
The challenge with that, I'm sorry, the challenge with that is again, you're requesting that the administration put forth and incorporate changes that the administration may not be in agreement with.
With all due respect, Council President, that's not what I'm asking. What I'm asking is the legal department, who has to work for the town council as well, do some work for the town council. The mayor may send her document and say, I don't care what the town council likes. This is what I support. She is entitled to do that. We still have to vote on what that ordinance is because this is the legislative branch. She is a part of the executive.
And this is what, and this is what she has sent.
Right.
Which is, which is again No, no, no.
No support for that.
This is what she has sent for us to review and approve. And again, all I'm suggesting is that if we want to take more of what was created and worked on by you into what the administration has provided to us, that is, that is our legislative capacity and that is what we should be doing. Instead of talking about all the other things, we could have actually been taking um, inserts, excerpts from this and putting them
No, no, we can't. Let let me be very clear. Well, you're, you're trying to make this into a political thing and and assess blame. That that is the That is the absolute wrong approach to all of this. It is far easier for us to work from one document that we all have that has been provided to the public so that all of us are working from one, one document. That's it. We've got five documents here. That's, there's no way to to reconcile all of this. And if we were to try and do it, and let's just be clear, like, this is not, I'm, if we were to try and do it, we'd be here past eight o'clock tonight trying to reconcile all five of these things with with each other. That's just inefficient. And you've got a meeting to go to now. Like, we can't keep spinning our wheels in here, trying to posture and talk all of this crap in here, trying to improve and impress people or or build up whatever the political support is or tear down somebody else's. We gotta stop that and just get the work done. The way to do this work is to have one document that we can work off of. We need the legal department to provide it.
But Councilman, excuse me, so so again, we have the Environmental Commission, which we all have appointments to, to work on this. You're taking a document from an advocacy group, which I appreciate their input, and you want that to be the gospel here with that, with and just transfer.
Absolutely not right.
Well, that's what I heard here.
No, so let me
All I heard was their ordinance. Our legal team has to represent the township. And even the Environmental Commission could give them something that may be worded that doesn't protect the township.
So I I don't disagree with um, that at all. I think we do need the legal team to to tell us what's what's legal, right? But this is not to discount the Environmental Commission or the forester. All of their recommendations should be in here too. And if there's a conflict, if there's a conflict, point it out. There's plenty of room in the notes to let us know. Like, one document is we can try and reconcile five different things. That's gonna take forever. It's gonna be a frustrating process. It's not gonna be a good outcome. Put all of those recommendations in there, un- unless they're not legal, right? If there's something that's being recommended that is not legal, obviously don't keep them and put that, but but tell us, hey, we kicked that one out because it's not legal, right? And and that's fine. Well, whatever. So put, just put it in there. Let us know so that we can work from one document. I don't think that's asking.
Color code, is that possible to do that? Is that, so is that possible? So now we have this ordinance that you did. And you had all the recommendations from all the other places. Can you make a list of the items that were not put in so we could then say, put, like, why make more work? So there's ten items that didn't go in these ordinances. Can they be listed so then we could say yea or nay, and then they get put in at the, at the next meeting? Are you, are you okay with that? I I'm trying to get this simple.
But in addition to that, we still have to go back to the missing parts. Again, this ordinance, as we're seeing it now, is only dealing with three parts. The additional information that they're discussing that you all have worked on is not included in what has been provided to us today. So we need to go back to the additional subsections of the tree ordinance to include everything and then come back and have that discussion.
Once administration doesn't
For the September nineteenth meeting, we will have a week in advance and Karen can post on the website an ordinance and we will look at this, our green, whatever.
Recommendations.
And we'll indicate what's in and what's not in and why.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Again, I know you won't concede it, but if we'd had it, we, there was no reason why Mr. Jengaro would not have looked at it.
I'm not, not concealing. I just said there were five or four, four or five. I didn't open up all these.
Everybody's gotta stop.
Okay, but there were four of them. And and just like you, I I don't care who gets the blame. No, I've not blamed you at all. Now, you may have taken it that way. That may be how Excuse me, excuse me, Council President, I still have the microphone. I did not blame you or anyone else. And I'm not interested in the blame. What I'm interested in is getting a good tree ordinance. How do we get there? Let's make it efficient.
Yes, absolutely.
I I hope that is the case.
And so is all of us. That's all of us. But we have to, we have to be mindful. And again, here we are two, over two hours later, and and we have all this other rhetoric that goes on. And we we had, so I think it's good that we're establishing a process to move forward with these items. Um, but I I have another meeting, so we gotta, I'm gonna make a motion to set another workshop up.
I just want to ask Legal to put in writing to all of us these processes because I'm very confused. I'm the new person on the
We're gonna work on the tree ordinance so that we can get that. So if you ever have a question in the process, feel free to call me on my cell.
No, email.
Email it to me.
Okay, you second my motion? Okay, so then, do you wanna uh, we have two other?
We're gonna, yeah, we'll add them to new business at the next council meeting. And um, we did have, um, we were moving the the gas-powered leaf blowers and the older adult advisory board to pending matters at the next council meeting. And um, also just wanted to, um, at this time, if there's anyone in council chambers for public comment. Just your name and address for the record, please. Yes, please. I can't hear him. Is the mic on?
Oh, no.
Yeah, I don't hear anything.
No, uh, to elected officials and the mayor, I think you're well intended. And I appreciate you. And for a thankless job, I want to say thank you. I have an issue with this today, though, because there was a question asked and answered. And then we take a lot of time. And I think the question was answered. I learned things today. I learned that it's not a permitted use on Eagle Rock Avenue for drive-throughs. And I think the zoning board should shut that down. I appreciate that. But I've seen it before and because we're, questions are asked and answered, and then it goes on longer. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. And Mr. Fagan, is there anyone on the Zoom audience for a public comment?
Uh, yes, Council President.
Can you please tell me how many people there are?
Uh, there are two hands raised.
Thank you. We're going to allow public comment from two members of the audience, and then we are going to end public comment. And this meeting was scheduled to be one hour, and we have far exceeded that time. And we have council colleagues who have other obligations. Um, so I just want to alert the public that only those two will be permitted to speak. Thank you.
Sally Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, Ridge Road. Thank you for uh, this discussion uh, regarding the fast food drive-throughs. This issue has not been addressed. The proposed drive-throughs at Whole Foods Plaza have been illegally proposed there. There is our ordinance say there is no permission for fast food drive-throughs in a PC zone, which is what that is. So it is already illegal. It does not belong in front of the planning board. They do not have the authority to write a variance for that. We've made that point at the planning board and it's been ignored. I'd like this council to, as you have said throughout this meeting, you want to follow the law. Passing um, an ordinance to allow special treatment of a fast food drive-through in that parking lot will totally undermine the law we already have that that prohibits it. Secondly, there, there is no reason to believe that Target, who is a tenant there and has already agreed to be a tenant, has any concern or care, or maybe they, they're not even aware of what the landlord is attempting to do by putting in a fast food drive-through in their parking lot. I can't imagine how that benefits them. We are not going to lose Target if we say no fast food drive-through in the wrong place. Uh, secondly, on the tree ordinance, um, members who care and have participated in many, many conversations, reviews, legal review of our current tree ordinance and put together valid arguments that were ignored. And I appreciate those council members who are paying attention to that. Those, tho- all the things that we presented should have been presented to you prior to this meeting. They're all reasonable, they're rational, rational, they're doable, and they should just be done. As far as the gas-powered blowers, I urge you to just force a vote on that and get it done. Get it on for first reading. All the other towns around us are doing it. Just get it done now. Stop wasting time on issues that have very little importance to a few people and major importance to a lot of people. So, thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate the advocacy on these environmental laws. It's been way too long and we're in a bind now with our tree canopies disappearing. We're in a bind. So this has to get done now. And I thank you and I I'm happy that you're all discussing it, no matter how rambunctious. And I hope it comes to a good outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fagan?
Kevin Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Fagan. Kevin Malanga, Ridge Road, Council President, members of the council.
Council President, members of the council, good afternoon and thank you very much for taking time out of your business day to conduct this meeting. I would like you to consider the proposal for the drive-through at the Whole Foods Shopping Center in the context of the plans that have been submitted for that project. What someone driving along Prospect Avenue will see is the back of a fast food restaurant. They won't see the front. They will see simply signs at the back. They will see the stacking line for the drive-through. That is not a good look for what is purported to be an upscale shopping center. So to make an exception for drive-throughs at this shopping center is, I believe, inappropriate. It's going to be the wrong look for the town. And I think the township should ban any further drive-throughs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the public, uh, for your indulgence and participation in today's workshop. Um, this was an opportunity for your council members to talk through and gain greater insight and understanding on some of the changes that we are seeking to do for our community. Uh, we appreciate all of your input. Um, this is again, one of the best practices of civic engagement and we thank you. Uh, we will respond independently via email or telephone calls to any of the statements, um, from those members of the public. Again, thank you so very much. Um, and I am going to call for the meeting to be adjourned.
Well, I, we, I, I had adjourned. We second it. We just have to say now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.